All right. Welcome, everybody. Time is now six thirty on October sixth. This is the Webster Select Board meeting for that. And we have had briefly had a non-public. But we are now here in the public session. And so we'd like to open as per usual with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Quick roll call. Dave Hemway, Chair of the Select Board.
John Clark.
And Marlo is unable to make it due to sickness this evening. So that brings us to our meeting rules and procedures. We will actually have, as you see the computer coming up, we will actually have a virtual meeting on the agenda tonight. For everything else, we'll follow school rules like we normally do. And everybody here is familiar with announcements. Do we have announcements?
I am not aware of any announcements.
Do our chiefs or others have announcements to make?
The governor still has the burn band on. People aren't liking it, but...
Yep.
The way of the day.
Hey, at least we didn't set a mountain on fire like they started to do in Vermont.
Small wins.
Though it was nice to see that we had the appropriate choppers and stuff ready to do it.
In Lebanon?
Yep.
Yeah, they're, yeah, it's cool.
And so that's ready to go anywhere around basically Vermont and New Hampshire that needs it. So expensive, but it's nice that it's there. All right. Seeing no other announcements listed, that will bring us to our appointments.
Which would be Greg. Can you hear us?
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yep. Let me move.
We didn't turn everything on. Can everyone hear him through that? Because that's just the projector. I'll go turn on the full system if not.
Yep. Can you hear me? I'm talking loud, bud.
All right, I'm seeing nods, so I think we're good.
Oh, I see myself. Oh.
Yeah, so you're on the screen behind us and all the public are behind you, basically. So welcome.
Thank you very much. Welcome, glad to be here. How's the town doing during the afternoon this evening?
It's been wonderful. Our weather's been nice, but it doesn't look quite like yours. Our grass is no longer super green. That being said, we are here to talk about the website and the transition and timelines and plans and how you expect that all to work. And so I'll let you take it away.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you again for letting me speak here today. And welcome, everybody. So the timeline is forty-six weeks from the time we get the sales agreement back, which is a simple one page. Just can't explain what's on there. Forty-six weeks. The difference is, it could be four weeks. It's just not how we get together, we communicate. You know, we'll migrate everything over. And then we'll add some pictures, maybe some documents. Then we just go through all things. Now, our web designers will have a meeting. And they will organize this from within a couple of days after everything's organized with us. And they will put together showing a timeline. And so it will be, you know, and I monitor it. The vice president, the owner, we all have all the same page. And our goal is to make sure you're four weeks, no more than six weeks. And then we're fully A D compliant. All the things that you got requested, the education, the online form fill-in, which means that you go in and fill a form out. And whoever you've signed it to, they'll get the email. Do that, someone completed the form. And then lastly, I know we have an emergency template that's being requested. And I can't explain what that is. It basically is being that if during the web designing, we'll have the main website being designed. And then you got to come up with a template of the emergency, whatever you want that to be. And it'll be basically just an on-off switch. And we can give permission to one admin or to multiple admins. And when the emergency happens, then you go in and literally just push a button and it comes up. And then it's safe, safe thing, we bring it down. So after the emergency's over, it comes straight down. We used that in Florida a lot with the hurricane. And California just gave us the big review on the fires last year, where that part, I mean, stayed last because the emergency was up. It had links to help people, where to go, what not to do. Was roads were blocked, was roads were open. And so it's a pretty cool thing.
Nice. Did you want to speak to any more of the process or questions that you have?
I do have a couple of things to bring up. So our contract, if you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. If you can hear our...
I don't think he's listening to you.
So we've got our contract with Civic Plus currently that runs out in February. So we are obligated until February.
But that's probably my morning game, piece of it.
Yeah. So we wouldn't be able to start migrating until the end of the year. Can you hear that, Greg?
No, I mean, I'm hearing just one of them.
I'm gonna go sit over here. Okay. I'll be, I'm on the sideboard now.
There you go.
All right, so with Civic Plus...
And there you are, Marlo.
Hey! It's appropriate now. All right, so with Civic Plus, our contract, I believe, runs out in February. We're required to give them sixty-day notice in order to be able to transition and leave the contract. So we are obligated till the end of the year. So I'm assuming we would need some overlap while you constructed the website. Could you construct the website while we were ending your contract?
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And there's all kinds of things we could do. We could even put a temporary sign up if you guys wait till the very end. But if you don't, yeah, just give us enough time, so we go. We really need them. We'll migrate things out, still be on the original site, which is through our fund stuff.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to bring up when we're talking about the emergency management template, I remember during your first demo that people could sign up using their phone numbers on that?
Yes. Yeah, that's what the, so the two ways to do the template. One is the email alerts, which is being, on your website, they'll click on a button. They'll say, "Add your email." And they'll get, you have fifty categories of what you want them to see. And then they could top reach one, and then make, you know, the newsletter, the emergency, whatever they want. And they'll get emergency emails when that happens.
Okay. And with the phone numbers, it's the same deal. So say they put their phone number and they wanted to be alerted by text messages or something like that. Would it be able to work with that or...
Well, it has been the proposal I gave. I left all the alerts, I mean, the phone. Because most people with uninsured residents always like email.
Right.
I can work it in and make progress a little bit without going crazy.
Okay, because that's one of the things...
And I'll, and I'll... We did it, okay.
That's one of the things the town has been interested in doing, is getting some sort of emergency alert through phone.
Okay.
So if you could add that in there as a separate item and then the board can decide whether they want to move forward with that too, depending on the price.
Real quick, would you want me to remove the email alone? You keep the phone?
Oh, we would have both. I think both would be the best way to go. That way we get the message out. The other thing that I was thinking about is that we're about to become our capital improvement program. And as part of that, we have to update the master plan. And next year's the master plan update or the start of it. So one of the things I was looking at is your survey feature on the website. Because if that's something we could build into the website with the surveys for the master plan, then we have a way to get the word out so that people can... I don't know if you could speak about the ease of using your survey system on your website.
If you speak, it's usually another add-on. But if it works, whatever survey or whatever questions you have, it'll be almost like the form fill-in where they can go in with a name, an email, whatever you want them to have. And then if there is a survey at the bottom, either a check mark or however you had it set up, we can create that as well.
Okay. And then I would like for you to demo the web forms with me in the future. Because I know we've talked about that before. And I want to kind of create an online permitting system so people can apply for permits right through the website.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's what I'll add, it'll be immediately.
Right. Okay.
This is Greg.
Yep.
Greg, I'm John Clark. I'm one of the other select board members. A couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What is the ease of someone, for lack of a better term, electronically registering their cellphone to get those notifications? How does that all work?
I mean, if you want me to share my screen, I can show you within seconds, give you a minute.
Yeah, I'll get the fire chief and the police chief here. It might be nice for them to say.
I have to give them permission?
Yeah, I'll tell you one thing. Let me share my screen. Let me know when you can see my screen. Okay.
Yep.
So, hang on, let... So this is the online form, by the way. So, let me... So you see that they put their name in and so on. We just hit it with a survey. And this will go right to the person who's in charge of, for example, this dog permit. You mentioned the permit. You know, that can go there as well. The email notification is just like this. They put their email in, sign up. And then it's okay, I'll do my phone number, because now we have both of them. They put their phone number in. And then they can go down. These categories are not, these categories will be what categories you choose. And we separate my news, events, notices, announcements, whatever. And they just click here. And then go down here and submit. And then, next you know, they'll get alerts immediately. It's that simple.
So a citizen goes online and fills this form out with the town, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is redundancy. Email's a nice, but I think cellphone notifications work just as well.
Okay. Yeah. And again, we can change the topics, whatever you guys choose, ladies choose. So that's, that's before the design program.
And what's the security, what's the security behind all that information?
So our TMS system is patented by us. The one thing that's very noticeable about revised, and you can ask even to your attorney now with Civic Plus, we have not had an intrusion or an hack in over sixteen-plus years.
Okay.
And the truth of the matter is, we've not been hacked in twenty-five-plus years, but we've not marred it until sixteen-plus years ago. So our servers are very maintained. It's our patent, it's ours. Yes, you're in good hands.
Okay, so you're intact, is what you're telling me?
Yes, yes, sir.
So in that regard, with everything being your own, how locked in do we become by using your service versus being able to export out if we want to migrate to something else in the future? Or how much are we locked in now where you're having to do everything manually versus kind of pulling out of Civic Plus?
I understand.
Talk about that process in kind of both directions and where that is.
Okay. That's a great question. So pulling it out would just be us going in with your administration information and just migrating all the pages and all the documents out. It's a pretty simple procedure. You own all the data with us. We do not own it. So if you want to leave us in three years, four years, we just shake hands and we just allow it to go back out again. We do not, we're not, we have twenty-five-plus years in business. We don't hold hostage, we don't play that. And that's something that, you know, why be here for as long as I've been here? So you can feel secure that we do not own your authority stuff. Your documents is all yours.
So in the migration, when you're coming from Civic Plus to yours, how much of that is redesign versus you pulling content and creating sections kind of as it exists now? And how hands-on would we be expected to be or need to be or can be in that process?
Okay, okay. So in the true migration, our design team, when they speak, they will look at how many documents are. And anything that's over than so many years, we're going to just talk about, you don't want to bring that over. Like calendar, if you have calendar stuff from a month ago, you don't want that brought over. That's just, there's just no reason for it. So we're going to discuss about that. And if it gets to documents and we, I mean, we literally just bring everything over and let, during the conversation, say, no, we don't want to bring this over. And then we'll sit there and walk you through to remove it manually with our assistance. So you don't bring over stale data.
Okay, that makes sense.
And so we will bring over everything you have now. And then we get, our design team is, now we'll talk about, do you want a video? Do you want drone videos? How do we want to make it look? And that's where it gets pretty awesome.
Okay. So in one of the things that we do now, we have different sections of the website. So for example, the conservation committee, the police department, the fire department, and so on. And each of those kind of teams also has the ability to administrate their section of the website, but not the whole thing. How well are you set up for that sort of individual responsibility per section? Or is it more you can do things to the site?
So to make sure, so I'm on your website now, and I know you have different... So the hyperlink to the police department will be the police department.
So for example...
Is there anything on the website? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so for example, we've got the energy committee and the, there's a solar project page up there. And I can administrate those and do almost anything that would need to be done on those sections of the website. But I don't have the authority to do that everywhere. The person that is currently the main administrator to the website is Russ. So he can kind of assist or set those rules up for individual sections. The chair and/or their designee for the conservation commission does similar, and so on. So how well does your site segment out administrative or content responsibilities if administration doesn't need to be there for that section?
So we can set up one admin for everything, or we can set them by department and they cannot leave that department. They can only go into what they're being told that they can go into.
Okay.
And that will be one of the administration rights of that.
Perfect.
Yeah. So if we just want to do everything, and then, like you said, you have somebody who can go into their area, and that's all they can do.
Okay. Sid, you're running the servers and you're hosting all of this, correct? So with, especially the rise of AI agents and stuff that are out there, not that we're particularly interested or worried about what we have to put up there, but I know that they can dramatically and exponentially increase traffic at random points in time. Is there anything in the contract that or such there where we need to worry about the number of accesses or similar? Or is that just, it's all part of the package? And we don't have to...
It's not part of the package.
Okay.
So you, yeah, you can sleep at night and feel like nothing's going on, you're good.
Greg, where are your servers located?
We have servers, we have three throughout the country. Michigan, Troy, Michigan, the main one. And we have one on the west coast, one in the Mountain Time area. And so if you have lose power, Simon Kay's Liam goes to the next server and you never go down.
That's why I was asking the question, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. We do have our chiefs here who would be using some of their sections of the website. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask?
It was more on the responsibilities and who was going to handle that one. Because right now, the system that we have now, the server will go down every now and then and we have to reset it. And one of us has access to that server just to reset it. Are we still going to have access so that if there is a problem, we're going to have to worry about that?
This is just the website.
Okay.
This is not the general IT.
Well, your question, I think, is...
But that's a good question.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Are you going to have access to be able to put a message out there if there's an issue? Is that, I think, what you're...
Absolutely, we have to.
Greg? That's the chief.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so that's, thanks for the question. We have an alert button on our website that the admin or the person in charge can go in, create an alert. It's all in a couple of seconds or whatever. It pops up in the bottom right screen or wherever you want it to pop up. And it'll give a brief description. And it'll say, "Read more." You click "Read more," and it'll go to more of it, more of it. Deeper dive information. And then when it's done, or you can just take it down as well.
So similar to the alert box that we currently do at the top of the screen sometimes, yeah?
Yes.
There you go. That's good.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your time.
Sounds like a very good comprehensive system.
Yeah. I thank so much it is. It's supposed to be wonderful for you guys and everybody else. And we can survey throughout the country, make sure that residents know what they want and the government people know what they want. We work together with both of them. So we don't just go by what we want, with your listeners. Although my wife doesn't know that, so... So somebody didn't mention that they want to have a separate meeting to go over certain things. Another demo. Who is going for this? Somebody mentioned, I thought I heard somebody...
It might have been in the audience, but it wasn't.
Well, not tonight.
Okay, okay. Well, not, of course not, but okay.
The, so a general question for you. Roughly, how large is your company? You mentioned like the owner, president, et cetera. And roughly, how many clients do you have? Or different municipalities?
Yeah. Yeah, we have over forty-seven hundred clients. And most of them stay with us for, you know, ten years or more.
And your company then?
And we, yes.
And roughly the size of your company then?
Yes, we have over seventy-five employees.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can we, can we get a list of some of the clients so we can take a look at their websites?
Russ has had a chance to do some of that already, so he can definitely forward some of that.
So if you want to send me an email, I'll send it over to you. Or I'll do it tomorrow and I'll just send it to you. I got your email. Instead of waiting for you to ask, we're just doing it.
Greg, what are the, Russ probably can answer the question. But since we're face to face here, what are the communities or cities in New England do you have?
We have Plymouth.
I think you have Raymond, too.
Other side, we have Raymond. We have Hughes County, Plymouth. We have Hook, Hookset.
Plymouth, New Hampshire?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. We have, I think I, we have over a hundred and twenty in your state.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so we have nice residents and we thank the state.
And their other websites look really nice. I can set you examples.
Plymouth, I'm familiar with Plymouth, so I'm just...
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Last call for questions. Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us.
And I'll reach out with more information tomorrow to you, Greg, and let you know what the next steps are. All right?
Oh, I thought you said something like that.
He couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I said I would reach out to you tomorrow with the next steps, based on what the board decides. All right, thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you.
All right.
He's enjoying his backyard in Florida. Why ask what service?
Yeah, we don't want them washed away.
No. By the alligator this time.
Either that or he's sitting at home and that's the screen thing behind him.
The way he was moving, it was definitely a background, yeah.
I was hoping to see an alligator come along across.
See how quick that alert could go out?
Yeah.
All right. Are we expecting to do more with that now or talk about it more?
It's on the agenda later, under old business.
Sounds good. Okay, so that moves us on to the department heads. So come on down, gentlemen.
I guess some of the departments too, I don't know. Come on.
There's another seat. I showered this morning. Let's go. Eight people of beauty. Okay, let's take a look first. Okay. Budget. As of nine twenty-seven, we've used two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents of our budget. We have thirty point five zero, thirty and a half percent remaining, so we're in good shape. Calls for service from September first to the thirty-first, we had, up to the thirtieth, we had a hundred and twenty-one motor vehicle stops, fines for some is six hundred and twenty bucks. Only forty-seven calls for service. It was a fairly quiet month, which I was pretty happy at. And the typical ones. I don't know if you want me to read them again? They seem like it's redundancy for everybody. It seems like it's the same complaints over and over. A lot of them from the same place, but they've been a lot quieter, which is good. And the active presence of more cruisers on the road all the time has definitely slowed that down. So that makes it a lot easier. Other than that, we're doing good.
Yeah, I just decided to pull up the full budget portion for you. Obviously, looking at it, vehicle maintenance is over a tiny bit. And overtime wages are over. I assume that the overtime wages is just because of the way that things worked for a while with only one officer.
Right, that was the reason why. But...
And so on full-time officer wages, we should see more, I assume?
Yeah, and with the part-time not using them the first part of the year, because we didn't have any. I still have plenty of money left in my part-time, so that'll be a leftover covered overtime. And I still got twenty-six thousand, thirty-three thousand left in there. So that'll be good.
How, how are we looking for, and I'm sorry, I don't want to jump into too many budget things, but in the past, you've done several things. For example, grabbing ammo for the next year and things of that nature. A, do you think that you're going to need to do that? And/or that it will make sense to do that this year based on the way you're seeing prices and so on?
Well, that ammo line is gone. We just haven't got the bills yet.
Gotcha. Because there's none that's shown in the budget.
Yeah, so that's gone. And we're just waiting for, actually, I ordered it, it was delivered the next day. I ordered it on Friday, it was delivered Saturday morning out of Massachusetts. I was shocked. I'm sure I'm going to have plenty of money left over at the end. I mean, enough so that if I have to pick up anything extra, I will. But I remember we took some of my full-time wages out for January and February. Maybe, was it January, February, or just January, February, March? Which is going to hurt me come budget time, because I'm going to have to add that wage back in. It's just not showing here. That's the only I'm worried about. But I'll have to see what my end numbers are. And then I can calculate on whether I should be okay the way I can be or just that little bit left added back in.
Okay. And I guess it'll be more of a CIP thing, but are you expecting any, are you expecting that you'll want to be requesting anything around cruisers? Or are we still good?
We could use another cruiser. So we got three twenty-ones, two thousand twenty-ones. Come the end of the year, one of them will have a hundred thousand miles on it.
Actual miles or mileage?
Actual miles. Actually, it'll be over that with idling time.
Right.
But I'm also looking at body cameras and tases. But instead of buying them outright, leasing them, it's easier because if something breaks, they replace it for nothing. And you can break the contract at any time and return them. They replace them every two years with all new equipment. So he's coming up to do a demo and give us some kind of an idea on our price. So I'll go back and watch you get to it. Body cameras, I think, are really needed today. Body cameras, I think, are really needed today's society. They really use.
Unfortunately, to protect yourselves and the town.
Protect the town. It absolutely protects the town and the officer. So I didn't think we'd have to, but we're gonna have to.
All right. So we look forward to that in further budget discussions. Any further questions or comments for the chief?
Do you have tasings now?
We have tasings. They're nine years old.
Yeah, but it's time for the tasings.
And only two of them are working right now. Other than. No, I have my own. I carry my own that I've had.
It's invaluable to.
Eighteen years old and it still works.
Reaches the ground between the mouth and the ball.
You've got that right. As you know.
Quick question, chief. Do you have cameras in the cruisers as it is right now? You don't have a dash camera?
No.
Okay.
That's why I body camera. And if you look at most of the departments now, body cameras are gonna be picking up for the cruiser cameras. Because if they turn their blue lights on, the camera comes on. If they draw their gun, the cameras come on. If they draw their taser, the camera comes on.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, we have so many idiots out there on the road. I mean, just going around the corner. I almost got nailed by a ten-wheeler on Cornell Road down in Bosworth, right on my side of the road.
So the last time I had, I had just cruiser cameras. I said, "I'm not gonna do body cameras, just cruiser cameras." And it saved us on three lawsuits.
Yeah.
Huge lawsuits for fadists that they said we were pursuing them and obviously in the camera that shows that they weren't. So we really lucked out on those. Most of the departments now relying on the body camera. It's high enough, they can see out the windshield. They seem to be working good. And we're gonna save about twenty thousand dollars a car, because that's what a new camera system costs, just for the cruiser.
I was just wondering that. Like I said, I've got it in both my vehicles. And, I mean, the idiots that are out there.
Is that?
We see it every day.
Okay.
You ought to be standing on the job when they crest over the job there and the things, the cars come around sideways with all the signs up and.
Oh, I know. Believe me.
They still don't care.
I see them down on the corner.
If one of those cameras saves this community one lawsuit.
It's worth it.
Pays for all the.
It does.
You know, not for everything. How much do they cost you?
I mean, I just, no. I'm not sure what it's gonna cost us, so we're figuring on five new tasings, five new cameras. And I'm only going five, ain't gonna go extras, because if it breaks, I call them up, they'll have me one the next day.
So are they five grand a piece or ten?
Oh, I think it's gonna be about between eight, ten thousand dollars a year for the two. But that covers, like for the tasings, the cartridges, unlimited amount of cartridges. They'll give us all the cartridges we need for training. They do the training for us. They send our officers to school to learn how to train the trainer. There's a lot added into it.
If one break, when you crack it going through a door, because you hit the door, I mean, they'll replace it.
You get in a fight and it hits, I mean, it's right out in front of you. So if you get in a fight and it hits the ground, if it breaks, you get a brand new one. There's no questions. Don't worry about insurance or nothing, just automatic replacement.
I fully support all of the cameras and stuff for the protection of everybody. One thing, though, that we will need to make sure that we vet with the company and everything else is the privacy concerns that can come along with that and what and how the retention is of the video and where it is and who has access to it.
So the retention on those, the limit, you get to the station, you put it in a docking station and it downloads to a separate computer just for that.
Right.
And that's, usually, the only people that have access will be the chief and one of his designees, which would be the lieutenant, maybe the second charge.
And usually, there's a, like a time limit unless it's part of a current active investigation and stuff, but like, those are the details that we'll need to make sure that we check all the boxes so that stuff doesn't go the places it shouldn't.
So the state statute's on how long we have to maintain those.
Right.
And that's what we have to do. We follow the state statute for longevity.
All right.
It's all good.
Which one of you other fine gentlemen would like to go?
Oh, it doesn't matter. It's all good. So we'll start at the firehouse. Been there on Wednesday nights, we've had good turnouts on Wednesday nights. The new ambulance goes to get lettered up on the twenty-third. So after that, it's lettered up. Matt will get that put together and put that, get that serviced. We're at, what, sir?
Did the decals come in for them?
I don't, I didn't talk to Phil. He was working.
No, I don't think Phil ordered them. Somebody from the town ordered them?
I'm not sure. I know Phil was working on that for me, so he must have talked to somebody, but.
Emery asked me today because he was the one that helped.
Yeah, Emery's helping me do it or do it or in charge of that project, so.
And just while you're doing that, since I have the budget in front of me, at the end of September, you had thirty-five crews sent roughly left for fire.
Sure. Yeah, no, other than that, things are in pretty good shape and.
When's your next fire meeting?
Then we'll be on the third, fourth, the fourth Wednesday of the month. I can tell you.
The other question we had was the CPR course.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay. CPR course you talked about this summer that you had going, when is that?
We're working on that. We're trying to get some stuff lined up, talking with the Red Cross in some different places.
Hasn't happened yet, though?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Would you let me know when it does?
Sure, sure. So the first Wednesday night's the truck check, the second Wednesday night's the medical training, the third Wednesday night is fire training, the fourth Wednesday night is the business meeting, and then if there's a fifth Wednesday night, we do cleanup and maintenance around the building.
So fifteenth is fire training, twenty-second's the meeting, twenty-ninth is the extra for this month.
So I'll probably be the other twenty-second.
Sure, you're welcome anytime. Give you a pager if you want one.
No, that's fine.
He's got a scan. He doesn't need the pager.
Okay, perfect. We went to Warner. We had quite a brush fire out into the Minks that started with a log-in operation. They figure maybe a spark, a chain, a skidder chain on some ledge that they were working on. They spent two days up there, Thursday from mid-afternoon through the evening, and then the following Friday, I went out the following Friday with a tanker in Holden Water with the big tanker. Worked out there and responded to a building fire in Warner a couple of days after that, maybe a week after that, but it ended up, it was a petition fire and they got it knocked down, so we got canceled in Ru. We've been out checking a lot on, people will call at night and say, "Hey, somebody's burning here or there," but they don't want to get involved, but I don't think it's right, so we'll go have a chat with the people and they just, you know, give them a little talking and figuring it out and, and those people are all great and put the fire out and understand what's going on and, you know, medical calls, so. And then on, any questions before we move on to the highway? I'm good.
I'm good.
And we've just been pretty much working down on Pleasant Street at the intersection of Detour and on the Detour Road. We did get over and grade up Bashan Hall and Garrish, that did get pretty washboardy and saw that some people were ready to get that graded up, so we got over there and got that smoothed up, so. But we need a little rain to make it all whole, but we did get two inches of rain out of that last storm, but it really didn't, it helped, but it, then I don't know what's tomorrow, three, a half an inch.
Possibly.
Tomorrow night, maybe a half.
If it comes.
Next week's the one I hope we'll have more, but we'll see.
We're looking to pave on the fourteenth to fifteenth of this month, so we gotta hustle the rest of this week to get that finished on Pleasant Street. The week, the mowers, I told you folks, the mowers were gonna be here this week, but we postponed them until after the pavement, so the mowers will be in town the week of the twentieth doing the roadside mowing, because I wanted to make sure we had our project done before we started mowing, so that's gonna happen that week.
Is the pavement expected to be, for example, just Pleasant and Detour, or is it including the bridge so that it'll kind of basically be finishing then?
No, it's two different projects. Is it Spencer's, Spencer's driveway at the log cabin?
Yep.
We'll start paving there.
Okay.
And go up towards Ron Derby's, up to the top of that hill. In backlash a little bit in front of the mailboxes on the product Pleasant Street, so it all blends in. But the entrances from the bridge, that's all bridge money.
I didn't know if it was all happening kind of as one paving project.
Well, they have another paving. It would be neat if it was all, but it isn't, it isn't gonna.
Okay.
But it will be okay. We'll get it overlapped and get it done. So once that project's done and behind us, then I can get back on some other things that need to be done, get the roads graded up for winter and hopefully we get some rain before that, so they pack in. Other than that, that's where we've been.
Is the bridge paid for? I know it's supposed to be. Have they received the money?
We've been receiving money, but we don't have all of it back yet.
I'm just wondering, because.
But the process has been going.
Certain money's been stopped coming to the state. I'm wondering if that's.
We were part of the state budget, so in theory, it will be okay?
Okay. I'm just asking.
That's a nice update. That's a good update to know about.
I'm just wondering.
No, the other day when they had the bridge meeting, they, I talked to Dana after the meeting, because I wasn't, didn't stop, because we needed to get stuff done, but Dana said that they were all good. Everything should be good.
Good.
With all that.
The state does keep telling us that, so.
I'm hoping.
So they did put the, they did put the rails on the bridge Friday. CWS put them up. The cement is all poured, all but the two aprons that's gonna go up to the fishing pier. Friday, I did work for the bridge. We hauled twenty loads of gravel in on that end and they've got that pretty uniformed on that lower end, ready for pavement, pretty close. They're stripping underneath the bridge now, getting all the plywood and everything down. And then they have to put the membrane down. And then the other side of the bridge, they move the equipment up there and they're gonna push that hill down. So when you come up over the hill from this side to the bridge, that hill's gonna be gone. It's gonna be pushed down into that hole, because there's like a five-foot to the bridge. And then they're gonna put the pipe in underneath, going out to Frost Lane, and that will all be built up, so there won't be a hump going up into Frost Lane. Despite, from one end of the bridge to the other end of the bridge, it's five feet difference.
Drop.
Drop in the bridge in a hundred and twenty feet. It's hard to see it, but it's there. So they've done a great job. It's really coming together. The landowners on our project, the gentleman John that owns all the land on the left and Frank on the right and, and everybody up through there has just been great, great to work with and it's been a good project. Everybody's happy. And they said that they'll have to have the cops come down now, slow them down. We got some of your track. Oh, it's come down.
Speaking of, how are we doing about getting the safety, traffic safety committee together?
Gotta get a meeting. Matter of fact, I have to talk to him after this, so we can figure out a date when we can get together.
Because that's, that's one of those, you know.
That's one of the ones I want signs at. We gotta put signs on that road. And I had a request for a speed sign on Robey Road, which we've never had them there before. They were looking for one sign at the beginning off in one twenty-seven. But that's something the board has to authorize that. Hence why it'd be great to get that reported, so we can authorize those and kind of.
Right, and then find out where the money's gonna come from to buy the signs and the post and the like, I mean, and all that good stuff.
I don't think we have that many signs, so it shouldn't be too, too bad. Dozen signs, maybe.
It's gonna come out of your butt.
Well, and, you know, things like the, the bridge, for example, like, when they came and presented, they presented that they were built, that the bridge was accepted, or I should say, done as an exception to lower speeds than it was originally there, purely because the rest of the road should never have been at that speed. And so those are the kinds of things we should look at, especially with the concerns of the folks that live right off of the, the bridge, like, adjusting speed on the road makes an easy sense of things to do.
Without being critical of the police department. And, and, I get it, totally. Okay, you can't be over. But I was out walking the other day with a dog and some gentleman was walking a dog and he, the car came down the road by Emmett's house, where there's a lot of traffic, as we all know, walking traffic. The guy yelled at the guy to slow down, I think the guy sped up, you know? I don't know these people's brains are, really don't care, but we do appreciate you getting out there as you have and doing the work, but I think as Dave is putting a sign, a thirty mile per hour sign out there, puts a lot of weight on the fact.
Absolutely.
The guy, the guy, like you said, I just said, I just don't believe, he says, "Everybody is crazy. They drive crazy." The poor guy's out there with his dog, you know? And we stood off the road with the dog, but, you know, I could see his point. I identified myself to him, I'm a board member and I'll bring it to the board.
I'm on Allen Road, Pleasant Street.
I see you. No, I'm not being everything, but I am so sick and tired of the lack of common sense and logic driving the motor vehicle. People can't drive them safely, get out of the park. It's everywhere. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel.
There'd be a lot of people walking, Joe.
There might be, Emmett. But you'd be a hell of a lot safer.
They won't be as bad if they can go in the military.
So on that note, let me ask another question, actually to our police chief here. Where are we with the grants for an additional position?
They haven't come out with it yet. Hasn't been posted. And I don't know what's gonna happen now with the government shutdown. Last thing I heard from Kelly Ayers' office was they're looking at the first of the year, at least she's hoping to get it for the third of the year. And she's hoping that the changes that she's made in the retirement system is gonna help, so.
Is there anything that we will need to approve or bring up at, say, a town meeting in order to make something like that happen? Or is that just us accepting a grant?
It's just the board, because it's a, it's a three-year grant. I think the board can make the decision. If we have to pull a meeting, we can pull a meeting easy enough, because it won't, they won't make a quick decision on that. And we'll know well in advance.
You need help writing that grant and you need us to get some?
Soon as he gets the paperwork. I've done them before. I've gotten two officers through the grant before, so we shouldn't have any problems.
When you talk to Kelly next time, ask her where the coal layers are, too.
I know, it should be up.
Can you have somebody to put right in place if you get the grant?
Oh, no. I'm sure I'll find somebody. I'm sure we'll find somebody.
Both of you remember the nineties when the PD, the police departments, there was a lot of grants out there for like five years.
Right, yeah.
Conker hired the number of people that allowed, and then at the end of the five years. years, I forget how many had to leave, you know, because of the budgetary system and everything. A couple of them lost, you know, they, they weren't kept on because of the money, so just, if we do get the grant money for one person, we have to start making the public realize that in three years at the end of that, we gotta...
Think where we are right now. So, three years from now, if we hired another full-time person, we could probably cut most of the part-timers out.
Okay.
So there's half of your budget that they have for it.
Okay.
And think what's gonna happen in this town, this town's growing every day.
Yeah.
In three years, it's, it's gonna be a necessity.
When you take a ride up one twenty-seven, you've been here long enough, and I, we've both been here a long time. I see the new homes going in over here, I see construction, I, I look at the homes being improved down on the southern end of one twenty-seven at the corner, which is the town line. There's a lot of movement in this community, I sometimes think, due to people working a lot, people having to go out of town. We, we, I think we see it, I've seen it more since I haven't been working as much, but I think it's very respectful, very responsible, we have to be responsible, we're all saying this, as to how we manage it, and public safety's a big thing.
Yeah, Bosquen's looking at a thousand new, new homes.
Looking at Main Street.
Year or two, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean...
I'm with you.
Yeah.
And it affects the ambulance, it affects the fire department, affects the police, and then when you get these other, other organizational things that happen, and Emmett made us aware of, where special needs things come into town, and require public safety and public services, and that's a whole nother concept we have to work.
Yep.
And it's, it's responsibility, and we have to be responsible for this. But, you're right.
So, we just have to be prepared, that's all.
Well, awareness, communication and awareness.
Awareness, I agree with you a hundred percent. Excuse me.
All right.
My turn?
Uh, unless there's more for...
Well, they dumped me and went back to the cops.
Emmett's worried about his budget, where then signs are coming from.
If the cop shop's good, then I'm good.
We all set that?
Just kidding, Emmett, I couldn't avoid that moment.
That's all right. Good evening, gentlemen. I turned in a quick report, it doesn't have everything on it, but it gives you an idea. My budget's still very good, I like to keep it the way it was last year. Within the, even though nothing's really been taken out, I did submit an invoice today for time served and everything, I'll call it time served. What's happened, Health and Human Services, for the health inspectors, everyone had to take its mandatory ten-hour class. It was video conference, you know, you had the testing, the whole thing. Everyone across the state that's a health officer had to take that. There's possibly another one next year, I'm not sure. So, besides that, I received a call this spring, and I turned in a letter to you about Sunapee and the septic systems along the lakes. I had an inquiry. Sunapee requires the waterfront property to have their septic tank pumped, inspected every three years. It's just a lakefront property. Talking with the health inspectors in Newberry, they tried the same thing, it got voted down at the public meeting, when they had their annual meeting, it got voted down. Then they went on a campaign to explain everything about how all the water in Newberry flows to Sunapee, and into the aquifers. So they did a lot of public relations and everything, and the select board passed the ordinance, everyone has to have their septic tanks pumped and inspected every three years. Next question. Okay, I don't have mine done. What do you do?
Yeah.
Okay? They haven't got to that point yet. Okay, but they do have a flow sheet, they, they have a program, I haven't got a hold of that one yet, I'm still in a lot of research stage here. But, uh, one of the inspectors told me that what they're looking at is, they'll send out the letter, "Hey, you haven't complied, please comply by such and such a day." It doesn't happen, they're looking at the legality, send them, suck them out, take care of it, inspect it, send them the bill, send you, John, the bill, you don't pay it, then they put the lien on your house. So, there's a lot of legalities in this, I mean, it, it, it's not just something, "I'm coming up with you, hey, sounds good." And I've been talking to some residents in town about this, that have property on the lakes and on the river. I think if we do go with this down the road, it's not just the lakes, but it should also include the river. Okay, any of the waterfront property.
Yeah, if it's waterfront, it should be waterfront.
Yeah, and also, we, we sit on aquifers, different sections in the town.
Excuse me for being the kid who's watching, but why wouldn't you wanna get your septic system pumped out, even with two people in the house, over so, three years at the maximum?
Correct, but like, like, we, we have some people on the lakes that are only there for six months. Okay, so that three, uh...
But how many people do they have over for that fourth of the lake?
I, I, I know what you're saying. This is where I'm talking with the other towns.
It's not Newfoundland Lake, but I can tell you about Newfoundland Lake, and where that septic sewage is going.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, this is not an overnight project.
No, it's, it's a, I like what you're saying.
It's not an overnight project, believe me, and I'm looking at it.
Here's a second question for you.
Yeah.
Currently, there's no reason, way, or anything similar for me to report, for example, that I got my septic pumped to the town.
Correct.
And that would open up a whole set of privacy and, and other sorts of issues, and additional record tracking overhead and stuff, in addition to all of the other legal challenges.
Yep.
So... I, I would, I would state it this way, that I support the concept and the reasons why someone would want to do this along waterfronts. The, any implementation would be challenging, and I don't know if I would be able to support any particular implementation or not.
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
But the concept is good.
Oh, I, I've got part of that under the right to know.
Yes.
As you want to.
But I think it's important also, saying, we're not disagreeing with you, but we sometimes don't always agree.
Right.
I think your research of doing this is very important.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you doing it. I think maybe, it might be nice to see a short memo.
Yeah.
You know, I'm the memo guy, okay? A short memo with bullets on how we can implement, 'cause you're the guy with the experience here, you're the person who trusts the experience, and maybe some suggestions. Yes, David is correct, that there's gonna be a lot of, excuse my term, bookwork, or computer, computer work.
Oh, yes.
And somebody needs to manage that, and as you know, we're, we're stretched to the limits right now. But, uh, we haven't got a code enforcement person yet who can work with you and work with other entities in town, the police department, the fire department, I mean, Emmett goes out on things, he should have a code enforcement person. So, I mean, there's all kinds of things, we're a growing community, and all those houses going up, we're gonna have to start looking at some of these things. And I think if we start building block, you know what I'm saying?
I, I, I agree with you a whole lot.
I know what you're trying, I know what you're doing, I mean, I get it. And it's, it's like, you know, okay, we, we don't, you know, we don't transport the ambulance unless we really have to.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a day when we're gonna have a situation, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and we need to start thinking and looking at those things, I think that's responsible government.
Yeah, yeah.
Not necessarily implementing immediately, but...
Right, correct. So, but, like, when I, when Paula and I first took over as health inspectors, after Dr. Van Loon and Nancy and so forth, none of these, she says, "Oh, it's nothing, you know, you do the school inspection, the daycare, nothing, forget it, things happen." So, we're working on the septic systems, okay? Green burials. Paula and I received a call about a green burial in town.
Would you define that for us?
It's a ecologically wise burial. You wanna be buried on your property.
Oh, okay.
There's certain rules you have to follow. Okay? You have to talk to the cemetery commission, get a portion of your land, post, you know, deed of what, whatnot, certificate that you're gonna be buried on your land. You cannot be embalmed, you're in a ecologically biodegradable bag.
Or wood casket.
Sheet, no, no casket.
No casket.
Really?
Yep, no casket. So, to my knowledge, we've had two green burials in town. Okay? This is gonna be one of the conferences on, on the health, health offices conference next spring. Paula brought it up with Sophia at Health and Human Services. We spent, I, I put down only three hours on this, we spent more than three hours trying to work on this.
So if I wanted to be buried next to the brook on my own property, what kind of problem is that, Brian?
I don't know yet.
Just ask him.
Dig a hole.
Well, you can dig a hole, but, but truthfully...
But I'm infesting the water, that's right.
Yeah, you have to be so far back, yeah, you have to be so far back from the water.
My point is that...
It, it, you're, you have, it, minimum, I think it's three to four feet down, the dirt that comes out, all of that dirt has to go back on top of you, even make the mound, because your body's gonna decompose, just the skeleton's gonna be there for a while longer, and that's gonna go down. When you, when the missus goes to sell the property, she has to let Emmett know, when he buys it, where you're buried.
And then another thing that I've heard is, if you have a cemetery or a burial spot on your property, and I've just heard this from whatevers, then if you really wanted to, a cemetery can't be taxed. So how big a tract of land is that cemetery? Is it the whole hundred acres, or is it just that?
Put the whole damn family in there, right?
Please, well, no, actually, actually, Josh Taylor, they, they have a cemetery behind their house, the whole family.
No, I'm, I'm being facetiously, probably inappropriate, but, you know, you bring up a good point, 'cause I would assume with all the seniors that we have in this community, the tracts of land many of those people have, this is not something that's over the wall, this is something that's very real.
It's something that's coming. I'm, I'm just letting you know, the chief knows, you know, it's just something coming. So, I mean, we're getting hit with some...
This is kind of research that's important for the community.
Yes, yeah.
I appreciate it, I know you're...
So, we had that, uh, we went to the health conference, at the health conference, it was great, some of it. Come to find out, like, only ten percent of the health officers in the state are full-time employees within the communities, the rest are like Paula and I, you know, we're, we're volunteers, you're, you're part-time, and so forth. At the health conferences, some were police officers, the health inspectors, others are members of their fire department, and so forth. So, it, it was a good conference, they did talk about the right to know law, ninety-one A, you know all about that, they went farther down with us. We also had to sign a confidentiality agreement thing with the state, that we had to watch, as you brought up, names on their flow sheet, on who's, uh, not pumping, or whatnot. You know, they had an attorney there from the municipal association, talking about the right to know and all of this stuff, so everything's getting more and more in depth. They're just trying to protect us.
Right.
And so forth, and protect the community. So, that was one of the big, big topics. The school, right now, we inspect that once every five years. Private schools, they're every two to three years. They're trying to change the law on that, to make it coincide.
Coincide.
Equal justice.
Which way?
They, they want it, they want it less than that. Because one, one of, one of the inspectors went to do a safety check in the school, and saw a health problem. He says, "I'm there as the safety inspector, not, not the health officer." And he's standing next to the attorney, and one of the other guys, and I says, "Did you still tell them they had the health problem?" "Hell, yeah." That's why they wanna get it from the five years down, because there are some problems with the school. As a matter of fact, I got a new sheet, they come up with a new sheet, I'm gonna drop it off at the school.
Is, is there anything that prevents us from stating that we wanna have it done more often to our school?
Not really. It is, it's been brought up, you can say, "I wanna, I'm gonna come in next week," well, it's once every five years, they can try and fight you on it. But, you know, it, it doesn't look good in that particular case.
Like, could, could we tell the school, "We want our health officer to check every other year"?
Yeah, we, we, we could do that, but we'd be, we'd be telling Merrimack Valley, not just the school here, we'd be letting superintendent's office know.
How often does Conker go in and check the schools?
I don't know.
Could you, maybe?
I, I can try and find out on that.
I'm sure you have.
I, I can try and find out on that.
Just, you know, so, like Dave said, we said, every two years.
I, I'm sure that they, they would not have a problem with us going into the school. I'm sure they would not, because if they said no...
There's gonna be problems.
Then it, then it would...
Look funny.
Then it would look very, very funny.
Kind of like, "What's your budget?", you know?
Yeah. So, uh, we receive, within a week, from Health and Human Services, Paula, I, Matt, we must get fifteen emails a week on different things. Some of them are pertinent to what we have here, you know, agricultural problems, one nice thing, we don't have housing development here, so my neighbor on the other side of the wall, things like Sonogon coming through the wall, we don't have that problem here.
Yeah, we do.
We're about, it, okay, don't mention names, talk to me afterwards, but, some of the stuff that we do get, it's pertinent for here, so we're looking at those things. Matt did do one foster home inspection this year. Okay? We have, I think, just a couple foster homes, one was in the pipeline, but they, they withdrew. Syntobacteria. In our budget, we get the river tested, okay? I think it's three times a year, they send us a report. I like them testing the river. The problem with that test is, it rains today, they do the test tomorrow, okay? It's gonna say the river's polluted, because of the runoff coming down and everything. So, it's a snapshot of that one particular moment, and we're scheduled to be done on the fifteenth, and it rained on the fourteenth, there's nothing we can do about that, they, they don't wait a day or two. But, several years ago, we had a major syntobacteria bloom. I went out, I had to post upstream, way up, downstream, the whole thing. With it being so dry, I, I didn't put it down here, but I've been down to the river and above the dam, behind the school, I've walked up, I've walked down, down past my place, I've gone down looking, the river doesn't look bad, you know, for us being so dry. I figured we have some type of a major algae bloom, but we haven't had it.
The deer are dying in Pennsylvania from bad water.
I think, well, we, we did, we did have several die here...
Three years, two years ago.
Up off of Pleasant Street.
Yep.
Well, the ponds, I won't say where it was, but, they, they were drinking the water out there, and they, they were dying because it was bad.
That's concerning. It wasn't, it wasn't out of the pond.
No, it was before the pond.
The wildlife biologist came up and had a talk with me about it, it's the nosaeums.
Oh!
So, they'll get a puddle of water someplace, it may only be a tiny puddle of water.
That's right.
They drink that, it's got the...
The lobe.
Lobe in there.
E H.
And within three days, dead. I mean, it kills them that fast, and they go right to water, so the ones we found were in a certain pond, and that's what they said, they just go to water, because it overheats that body, and that's where they head.
You know, the, the southern part of Pennsylvania, they're, they're losing the deer herd from that, from being so drought. from that, from being so drought.
And they were having the, I don't remember what it's actually called, but basically mad deer. That, that was going on.
Oh, the brain worm?
E H D.
Are you talking the brain worm?
Yeah, yeah.
That they have?
That was more the moose.
That was more the moose.
There was another one that was happening in Vermont, and it was deer.
Yeah. Any compliance investigations you worked on?
No, not, not right now. We, we're doing pretty good. But, like I said, we hit different things. The first year we took over, there wasn't enough money in the budget. We finally picked the budget up. I have just submitted an invoice for just, I think, under $800, something like that. It pays for our membership fee to the municipal association and so forth, there's three of us. So, I'd like to keep the budget that way for next year. Just be advised, our appointments are coming up Ju-, July of next year. So if you want a new health inspector, it's up to you, the board, to do what you want. Okay? So, our appointment will be coming back up in July.
Would it be my assumption you'd like to continue in this position?
Today, yes. Today, yes. I know we're out of state some of the time, but Matt can handle a lot of the stuff. And I still receive calls.
Well, I, I don't see the point in disrupting what works.
Yeah. So, I, I just wanted to let you know that that's there. Any questions? Russell?
Nope.
Boss?
I would say thank you, we, we did kind of jump into the 2025 budget, which is scheduled a little bit later, but that's fine.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did, new business.
Yes. So that worked perfectly fine, though?
Does it block anything?
I'm always good with what you say to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I mean, I've been here for the budget stuff. Young Roy. Do you have anything specific?
Let's see. That's all seed, that's silver.
Health, welfare. Fighting instantly. Okay. So, yeah, that was, that was the only one out of them that, that had budget tonight, so. So, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Website. Oh, she's leaving. Thought she was gonna talk to you. Okay, I'll sit here.
Is she leaving, or just you?
I don't know. Well, she might be just talking to the chief.
That could be. All right, so I guess that moves us to the website.
So, after you've had the presentation, how do you feel about it?
Well, as I always give credit, David is the IT guru here. I come at it from a little different angle, and I'm definitely not an IT guru, I'm a user. So if David feels comfortable with it, and you feel comfortable with it, and from what I saw, and my biggest thing is where the services are from my background. And that doesn't mean I know all, because I don't. So, I'm happy with what I heard. I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I have two parts of that I'm happy with the presentations that Greg is giving me. And I feel confident that we're gonna get something comparable to what we currently have. My biggest concern is making sure we're ADA compliant next year. Because that's when the date is that we have to do with federal government. And I have not got any response from Civic Plus about when our update's gonna happen. And they're gonna charge us for something that's covered in our contract, which we're supposed to do.
Well, I don't wanna speak.
So I'm not happy with that. And I, I feel more comfortable knowing that the thing that has to happen is gonna happen.
We've gotta have something more than electronic sign in this town to get information out to citizens. And the sign is good, but you need to have three or four levels of redundancy. I mean, I don't need to explain that to you fellows, you get it. And, and I think this gentleman Greg tonight explained at least two levels, and that gives us three. And, you know what I'm saying, our fourth is usually the news, but we need to be able to broadcast on locally.
I mean, it's not as good as what they have to pay big bucks for, which is anybody in the area would get it automatically. But at least this gives people the opportunity to sign up with their phone.
It gives citizens who sit, who sit in front of us, an opportunity, you know what I'm trying to say? And I'm one of those citizens, okay? And I like to know what's going on, I don't need to build any particulars, but I think they will, you'll find, once you put it into, into mobility, many other people will come forward and say.
And I think we could do a, a nice campaign with the police department, the fire department.
That's great publicity.
To get people to sign up.
And, and one of those things, like, we get a number of people at say-town meetings, but when the next federal election happens, we're gonna see lots of people come through here. And we will have all of the new stuff updated, ready to go, and been displayed, and the box worked out for a while at that point. So, when they come through and they're checking out, we should stick a kiosk there, like, hey, do you wanna sign up for alerts through the town? And I bet we can drive a whole number that way fairly quickly to actually make it truly worthwhile to the citizens instead of, like, maybe 30 people bother to sign up and get stuff now.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
When the tax bill goes out, okay, when the spring tax bill goes out, if we're on this new system, maybe there could be a sheet of paper in there saying, "Go to the website and list it for emergency content information," or something like that, because that's a mass mailing, too.
Yeah, we, we did that last year with getting phone numbers for the 911s.
Did we get a number of them?
Oh, we got a lot.
Good.
Yeah, but most every single person who responded gave us a phone number.
But, but you know what I mean? You know, if, if it went in with the tax bill, you know, for the new website, go to the new website for emergency notifications and read the directions.
And I think an add-on to that, much like we, in our own ways, asked the question tonight, is describe the security of the systems, so people are not afraid to sign up for the system.
Correct. Because I was thinking about, is it all right for me to talk about?
Sure, certainly.
I was trying to think, like, if we had an algae bloom, I got word on Saturday that there was an algae bloom, okay? The river is not safe to be in, the offices closed and stuff like that. Yeah, I can call you, so I can come use the printer downstairs, you know, to print up posting. But if we could send out the message to everyone's phone.
There's one part of that, we just have to make sure we have somebody available who can make the alert and alerts from the website.
Yeah.
So it would have to be me and probably Phil, or whoever police officer's on call. So once on the weekend, you can call beyond call off.
Yeah.
To make the urgent.
And I didn't wanna barrage him with, with, "What if, what if, what if?" tonight. But, some of these companies have ready canned messages that you can put out there. I mean, we could create a, like Roy says, he could come up with some canned messages as an example, you, you know what I'm trying to say? It would make life easier for whoever, whoever might not be the, the health guy, you know what I'm saying?
But I feel confident with this, this company right now, more so than I feel with our current company.
And this company does also have social media integration, right?
Correct.
So, one of those things that we should definitely look at doing when, when this is set up and, and going, is we should look at having an actual Webster, like, Facebook page, and things of that nature. Totally comments off and everything else, but so like, if there's an emergency alert, or if there's a major post, instead of, you know, like, or maybe even every meeting, but like, the major things go as, it's also a Facebook post, and a whatever other post, you know, on other platforms. Because a lot of people don't look at anything other than their particular platform that they use. And that can help reach a whole slew of other people that won't ever look at the sign, because they're driving by it too fast, and won't ever sign up for anything. So.
Right.
So what was the question you wanted us to answer for you?
Well, I mean, do we wanna move forward with this company? So we're good. Okay. Because then I gotta get the letter ready to tell Santa boss we're not continuing to be in here.
The, the question that we had before was whether it was upfront payment for the, the migration, and then just the normal annual bill? Or whether it was the migration rolled into the annual bill? Did we find out if we had a way to do the ARPA stuff to cover that migration or not?
Dana was working on that, and he's not in, so I can ask him tomorrow when he comes in.
Okay.
But I think he said we could.
If, if we have the way to cover that in there, so that we make sure we've used as much of it as possible, then I think we should do it that way, have the lower payments going forward for three years.
Yeah, and I would expect the quote to maybe go up a little bit, because they're adding the emergency alert section. And they also still have to look at the entire website and go through what we wanna migrate. Because that was just an estimate based on what we said on our conversation.
No, I think, David's on board with it, let's just proceed and get going.
And I think that's good, I got my direction, and now we can move.
Do we need to make signatories or anything, or is that for later?
So I'm gonna bring the contract in at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so that brings us to budget. Unless there was anything else you'd like to say about the website?
No.
Okay. Are you waiting for anything in particular?
No, I'm just.
I'm, I'm just here to listen, because I've been out of touch for about a couple months.
All right.
And we got a busy one tomorrow, what if you're gonna be there?
I will.
So, yes, so we already heard health from Roy, so that leaves us tonight with welfare, debt, executive, financial administration, and legal lines or areas of the budget that were scheduled. Dana was scheduled to talk about most of them, but I believe he said you are prepared to do that for him.
I will do the best I can.
I can do long and short-term debt, we're gonna leave it the same way it is.
Well, that's why we have to do those. I mean, I think the biggest one that Dana would have to talk about is the welfare budget. And with that one, as you know, welfare goes up and down various, I think this is the welfare budget, he doesn't label them. Director's salary, training, mileage dues, and vendor payments.
That looks like the right one, because it wouldn't be director or something else.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, where's the money that goes to the, do we have a trust fund for that?
We have a budget line in, and we also have a trust fund, I believe.
Okay, so I'm not seeing, I know he's doing the salary, I think he did a 3% across-the-board salary, agrees, and that's just a placeholder to determine the salaries. At that point, but I'm not seeing if he wanted more money or less money this year. I can tell you right now.
It looks like he's got everything set to be the same.
Yeah, we really didn't have anything unusual with welfare this year, it wasn't like last year.
Budget remaining is actually quite small for vendor payments. There's only 29 bucks left in it, according to this. So I don't know if that is accurate for this year, or if it's a leftover column from last year. I would expect it to be, yeah, that, that does look like it's this year's, because it's expenditures to date, and it matches this year's budget. So, yeah, there's, there's a very little amount there. So I would question him as to if it really makes sense for that to be, or if he knows, for example, that he's not gonna have as many clients, or something like that.
Well, that's the thing, you never know when you're gonna have more clients.
Expecting less to start with, or something of that nature.
And to me, if I was gonna say something personally, based on the way the economy's going right now, I think it might be prudent to put a little bit of extra up there. Let me know the other two. And then we have a tan interest line.
Yeah, that's always there.
That's always there.
It's always there is the placeholder $1, though maybe it actually shows something this year. Hopefully not, but maybe, based on the bridge repayment timeline.
Audit services are going up, or at least they were up for this year. That's the other thing I have to look into again, I know it's really hard to do it, but we really should switch audit companies at some point, considering we've always had the same audit company.
We asked about that a couple times.
Well, it's one of those things I was asking for at my financial class that we were taking with NHMA. Switching the audit class, there's only so many companies that actually do it in the state of New Hampshire, and it's very hard to switch auditors right now.
Well, and this company, I thought, was gonna give us like a different department or different group to do it at least, but I don't know if that happened.
I don't think that has happened. I think Dana has asked about it, but I don't think that has come into fruition yet.
Financial administration budget is what we're talking about now, right?
Correct.
I don't see an extremely large increase in that.
No.
I, I see an increase in the audit services list.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. He didn't talk to me about the increase in the audit services.
$3,000?
Yeah. He told me about the salary lines, and those were placeholders. But he didn't tell me about that one, so I'd have to ask him about it tomorrow. He really also didn't get much time to say things before it was gone, because I was in class the day before. Association dues, it seems like it's going up a little bit, but it's not that much. Oh, it looks scary, but it's.
Yeah, it's 50%, but that means it goes to $40.
Yeah, right, not that scary. A lot of those big percentages are exactly in the same department.
What association is that?
So, I believe that would be our NHMA dues.
New Hampshire Municipal?
No. This is, this is in tax collecting section, finance and tax, so it'll be one of the finance or tax groups.
Belonging to that.
Yeah.
I'm questioning whether we have.
I'm not questioning, I'm just asking.
No, I question it.
I know there's like, there's one that's, for example, for the Clerks Association and stuff. I'm sure there's another one that's the Tax Collectors Association or something.
They do have a Tax Collector one and a Clerks Association, which they do, and they also have their training lines.
Yeah.
Well, it's important for them to belong to those organizations, as we, I think we all agree.
Right. And my.
But, yeah, the rest of that looks pretty normal.
It's all pretty normal, that's why I said it was a big nothing burger.
Yeah, it's just that audit service is one.
It's just the audit service.
A good question. And then there's, there is a fairly large percentage on the deputy, but I think that's gonna, actually, no, for tax, I don't know why that would be a large percentage increase, because they're not gonna be doing anything more or different. In fact, they may even do less, since we'll have the Tax Collector here more often.
Well, that's the other question we have to bring up during when we have the Tax Collector in and Mary in, is how that hour distribution's gonna be. Because right now, from what I understand, when Stephanie's working for Mary, Mary doesn't want her doing Tax Collector stuff unless she has to, because she's on town clerk time.
Right.
And I think that makes perfect sense.
And we were very clear as to how we made that separation.
Right. However, during tax evening, there is some overlap, and there currently is some overlap, when somebody says, "Oh, I wanna pay a tax bill." She happens to be there, so she can take a tax bill. So I don't know how practical that is at the end of the day for her not to be able to do some of that work, especially during.
Do we have them set at the same rates for the two positions, or not?
I would have to check, Dana might have that.
Actually.
In this section here.
No, because I think the Tax Collector one is a normal stipend, not an hourly type thing like the clerk's position. So that, that is something that really does need to be worked out, because it's not just, well, pick one and it's the same dollar amount. Okay. Yeah, so we'll need to talk and figure that out, but that can wait till.
We have those department heads here.
And he'll be at the next meeting, right? He's, he's not scheduled to.
The next meeting, Dana will be at the next meeting.
Yeah, so we can ask him the questions, or you can.
You can ask him some questions, or I can prepare with him for those questions. And we're gonna be doing my budget next session, which I'll be able to do for planning. He's got Craig listed as the planning board chair.
Let's see. Yeah, so next meeting is the 20th for us, which is listed here, so that will be cemeteries, parks and rec, elections and registration, property revel, code enforcement, and planning and zoning.
Now, being new to this process, Russ, you've got a free ring bind here. Is it my assumption, my words, that each time we talk budget, you give us pages?
Correct.
That we can review.
Dana said this is an experiment for this time.
No, I think this is nice.
He wants to keep binders, so we know how the budget changes as we go through.
So we give these back to you at the end of each meeting?
Correct.
Okay, good, no, I think that's a great idea.
And you like yours online, so we have Dana's budget.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't do it online. And like I said, I readily admit I'm operational, not.
No.
And like I said, I readily admit I'm operational, not, I can tell you what it's going to cost, but I like to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I noticed in this, this one, for example, the first one with health administration is minus a hundred percent because it's, it doesn't have the proposed budget filled in for the administration wages portion. Obviously, we've now talked with you, and we know it, that you, that just you want to keep it the same. But he probably left it empty just because of that or something, but not knowing it. But I will try to go find the spreadsheet that we keep for this stuff so I can update those and not make Dana have to do it. Though I'm busy as all heck through the weekend.
I need to get access to David's budget spreadsheet, because I don't think I have access to that current one, because I'm going to need it on the board.
So when we're done doing this, realigning the new numbers, this 2026, we'll get an actual budget spreadsheet that we can again go through and make sure.
Right. So the way it works is we have all the department heads come in. You meet with everybody, and they give you their wish lists. And then we usually have a work session or something where we go through it line by line, and the board makes whatever recommendations you want. And then we bring the department's heads back in at the end, and then we go through the budget.
If we're requesting to change or have further discussion.
Only for changing or further discussion. So that's generally how it goes.
And Roy did make a good point, and I don't want to step in on anything the chief is doing, but I do think it's important. When we do look toward doing that grant this coming year, and January is when it's coming out, what I'd like to see is that stepped out five years. So what it's going to cost us, year four and year five, members pay for it for three years, but year four and year five, and possibly year six. I don't want to go, you know what I'm trying? Not that I am fully for it, and how that equates with part-time, bringing part-time into that budget, if that makes sense to you.
We can ask the chief about that.
Yeah, Steve knows what he's doing.
I remember the nineties, when you were sergeant, I think, at the time, and you lost a couple of people. And all of a sudden, everyone, whoa, how are we going to pay for this?
Well, yeah, it was, Dave was a good chief. He wiggled it through, but we needed the cops.
It'll be interesting, because the, it will, it will actually be shown opposite of what will be helpful for making the case. Because when we first get the grant and we get the officer and then no longer need the part-timers as much, that's just going to be a decrease in our budget, because it's being paid for.
Right.
So it's actually going to look like our budget dropped, not like we're preparing to have a larger one later. And.
That's going to make it very difficult to sell at the end.
But also, everybody's going to know that that's coming. I don't know, I don't think there's a way that makes sense with funds or anything like that to try to smooth it over, because it's just going to be a continuing thing that's in the budget, so.
And people need to understand the difference between full-time and part-time police officers. Part-time people, and I'm a part-time where I work, you know, but if I'm going to full-time, and I would trade part-time for full-time any day of the week, because you have a dedication to duty, scheduling, the people that you know are going to be on duty. With part-time, due to the fact you want to hang on to good part-time people, you kind of have to schedule them, understanding that some days they're not going to be able to be here when you want them here. And there are many other things that probably Roy and I could go on and give a synopsis on it for now, but we're not going to.
I'll just say we're very fortunate with our current part-timers.
We are. We're very lucky.
But obviously, we can't plan to keep it that way forever. So yes, I agree, but yeah, it's going to look funny and, but also that's a pretty easy and straightforward.
Point made.
Point to make to people when it happens, especially when it's one position. Be different if it were like four or five suddenly happening at once.
We're not asking five cops. We're asking four.
But yeah. Anyway, is there anything else that we wanted to go over that?
This is the easy budget night.
So yeah, the process is, everybody gives us what they want, and then we discuss. And if we want to change it, then we bring them back in and talk about changing it.
I like this.
I think we really get into the big budget when it starts in November, so probably when Dana's going to.
Yeah, that's when it gets cooler.
Yeah, that's when you get police, fire, ambulance.
Police, fire, all that. That's the big stuff.
I'm sure it'll go well.
Et cetera. Yeah, okay. So that concludes the 2025 budgets for this session. Brings us to correspondence. Have we gotten any?
Do not have correspondence.
All right. That brings us to public comment.
I've said my piece.
Peace.
All right. So motions and approvals, we do have some minutes. Do we have documents and stuff to sign as well?
So this is what Dana left for me in the documents, and there are nothing to sign. Okay.
Great.
So that makes.
Yeah, because we're not, this month, we're off by one week for the signings for, like, payroll and stuff.
You're going to get a phone call next week to come in and sign.
Yep. Okay. So that brings us to our minutes. Have you had a chance to look at the minutes up there?
I don't know if you caught any spell checks. I didn't happen to, but.
I'm not going to bother to go down the realm of minor things.
Wendy for spell check this time, so it should be better than when I used Dana.
Let's see, we do have the two non-publics.
And we're missing one. I got to talk to Dana about that.
One from the eighth, one from the twenty-second. And then on the twenty-second, I think we had, two, three, one, two, we had three listed for the twenty-second, so, wait, no, that's an adjournment. Sorry. Two for the twenty-second, one for the eighth.
That's what I was just mentioning. I saw one wasn't in there, so I was going to ask Dana about it tomorrow.
I do appreciate you putting in here on page two. I just want to mention, I did ask the fire department members, I think Roy was one of them, although he's not a member, but he has been, fully experienced, about the situation we're discussing regarding fire service with Hockington. I think it's important to get their input. I really do. I mean, and I think it's important. We know it in here as you did, so I appreciate that.
Speaking of that situation, just because it's come up because of the minutes, I did have a brief discussion with somebody that knows a bit about the going-ons over in Warner. And they were thinking they were not going to do anything. Also, to the reason why we haven't heard back much, their town administrator has been on unpaid forced leave.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And so that's why we haven't heard anything. The gentleman that I discussed with was going to try to set up, or at least put the bug in the ear of the chair of their select board, that we wanted to talk to them about both this and a specific property. Because they've had some of those conversations, but not in sessions, and they need to and want to.
I was waiting for the situation down there to cool down a little bit.
Yep. So he's, we may or may not hear from the chair of their select board, but.
I just, I will put it politely, they've got a lot going on.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dave, you brought it to our attention. I also, I also think, too, please don't think I'm being, I'm going sideways because I'm not. But anyway, Webster's Webster, Warner's Warner. And with respect to their situation, whatever it might be, it seems to be a bit of a colossal right now. But with that being said, you know, I think we, we work well with Hockington. I went by the fire department on Saturday, had all the equipment out, and they've been an impressive, impressive fire department. Yep. And I, you know, our partnership is very important, and I know you're not saying it, but I think we made good decisions, and I think having, having, having our town administrator work with your town administrator.
Absolutely.
We came up with a good price, and we heard from our fire, fire, senior fire staff. To me, that's what is important in small towns. I, comparisons are nice, you know, if we're going to rent graders and that kind of stuff, that's great, you know, but, you know what I'm trying to say?
Exactly. We are us, and we're supporting what we intended to, but we did ask about what was going on, and.
We did. No, that's, no, I appreciate it. I do.
All right. So in that case, with no further adjustments, I would move to accept the minutes presented to us as written for the main meeting of September twenty-second. And which one is it? Is that one? Which would be session? And the second non-public session from the same date, as well as the non-public session from the eighth.
I would second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Anything further? I don't think there is. Any last comments?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you for coming here and doing the things you're doing as well. Okay, I would move to close the meeting at eight oh nine.
I'm hungry for hamburger. I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We appreciate that, Roy. I think we're pushing things down the road. But it takes, it takes community, you know?
Yeah. Believe me, when I saw the federal government, it held, holding back on certain money coming to the state, held the law.
Well, you tickled my brain for that one.